This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs, City Council, come to order. The clerk is Stash Corn, please.
Ken Pownal.
Here.
Mitch Berry.
Here.
Lani Balance. Parker Raphael.
Here.
Karen Lindblad.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next would be approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any changes, deletions? Mr. Berry.
As per what I asked at the special meeting, if we could have a discussion of waiving fees for the new Eureka Springs High School.
We can do that under number eight if you want to. It's basically the same issue.
Okay.
Okay. Let's move it to number eight. Okay. All right. Mr. Pownal.
I make a motion that we postpone the nomination of Ms. Thaxton and Parks until the new council is seated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Mitch Berry.
No.
Three, two. Oh, there she is.
Yes. Is this approval of the agenda?
No.
No.
This is postponement.
This is postponement.
Yes.
Three, three.
For a postponement?
Correct.
No.
Four, three.
It's on. It's on.
One issue. Okay. That's good. So Ms. Thaxton's in. Good deal.
Wait a minute. We just voted to put her in?
No.
No.
Oh, all right. I thought you said she's in.
So I failed to postpone.
Correct.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, I would move that we postponed it till the next meeting because I haven't been able to get a hold of her to find out if she's a registered voter or not.
She is a registered voter. She voted in the last election.
All right. Then I withdraw my motion.
Is there a second?
I withdrew it.
Withstood. Okay. Mr. Raphael.
Yes, I'd like to postpone number one and her new business till the next meeting.
Excuse me.
Okay.
I'm terribly sorry. I arrived a bit late. Are we on approval of the agenda or were we on Parks voting on?
Approval of the agenda.
I don't mean to be rude or obnoxious, although I usually am. I thought when we were working on approval of the agenda, it only took a motion and a second to put it on or leave it off. We didn't vote on that item at that time. I thought we approved on the approval, we voted on the approval of the agenda after we had made all of the adjustments.
We've done it both ways. So if y'all want to go back into the original way, that's up to y'all. We have voted on it, we have not voted on it, so... Whatever the council wants to do. Right now, she's still on the agenda. Ms. Lindblad.
I move that we approve the whole agenda the way we've always done it.
Second.
By voting on piece by piece.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay. Ms. Lindblad.
I'd like to postpone the discussion of readjustment of vacation water rates.
Second.
Could be number seven under unfinished.
Yes.
On clarification, I wanted to vote on new business item one. The motion of second, we didn't vote.
Okay, that's where we have an issue that apparently, we've been doing it both ways, so whatever the council wants to go back and readdress the issue. We have voted, we have not voted. Mr. DeVito.
Generally, the consideration has been to who has brought it to the table, and since Mr. Raphael has been one to bring it to the table, and if he needs, did we get a second on that, so that should suffice.
Mr. Raphael.
Yeah.
Any other changes? Mr. Berry, you got your hand up.
Yeah. I think I'd like to postpone the discussion of item number five on city permitted and city sanctioned.
Number five.
Second.
May I then second it? Any other changes? Deletions, additions, too? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's five, one. Next would be approval of the minutes for eleven, twelve, twelve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any changes, deletions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Next would be Commission Committee Authority Reports on Expired Terms. Planning, Ms. Blankenship will address forward planning. Is it a time?
I just want to let you know that planning has a CUP hearing on December 11th, our only meeting in December, and it's for 23 Hillside. And we also have someone from SWEPCO coming to speak to us at that meeting about the cost and the difference of varying utility lines and having overhead lines for new construction. We also sent you what we believe is a great list of year-end accomplishments that you helped us to achieve, well, that you did achieve. We just sent you the recommendations, and we hope you all receive that, and we just wanted to say thank you. And then, lastly, there's something that the Planning Commission wants to make you aware of, that we are not sure how to handle, and we believe that we need more help, and that is the Queen Anne Mansion. We read an article in the paper this past week about it being a private residence club, the only one in the whole state, maybe the only one in the country. I don't know that for sure. But we asked the mayor to help us get information about that with the municipal league's land use attorney to help us know what even direction to go, and for a while, we were going through timeshare, and that doesn't seem to be the entity that it even is. And so, our concern is that they will have a lot of people using a lot of restrooms, a swimming pool, and not have to pay back to the infrastructure of the city. And we just want to make you aware of it so that maybe you could put a business license category in there for something, or I don't know what, but it's bigger than what the Planning Commission really, I mean, we need help or we need direction. We need an attorney to help us, or we need municipal league guidance. We need something, but we don't really know what to do with that. So I give it to this table. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, before she leaves, I guess the question is, you mentioned about talking to land use attorney. Does that make trying to get the mayor's office to contact?
Mr. Van Tonglen or somebody from municipal league?
Well, he's not an attorney.
That could help me in the direction, because I don't know, and I, you know, the Planning Commission can't spend resources or, you know, contact lawyers and things on behalf of the city, so we're just trying to say it's bigger than us. We don't have the expertise there to know how to do this.
Next on the agenda, CAPC. No report, hospital no report. Parks vote on Ms. Myrna Thaxton for position number, this has been deleted so many times.
It's one.
Yeah. I believe it's two. Position number one is still agenda. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
This will be the vote. Yes, sir.
I move to approve the nomination of Myrna Thaxton to position one. Parks?
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Mr. Pownal, do you have a note?
Four, one, one.
Next, DC Cemetery. You're up.
Mary Ann Pownal, Secretary Treasurer for the Eureka Springs Cemetery Commission. I'm here to just give a report of where we're at with the Cemetery Commission. It's been a year. Thank you, council, for every one of you for your help and support of this commission. We are making good strides. We still have some questions regarding the CDs. An update on that, Mayor Morris, is really not too much further than what we already know, but as soon as I'm able to acquire a little bit more documentation, I've kind of thought out of the box to try to acquire some additional documentation requiring the stipulations of the CDs, and as soon as I do know, I will let this council table know. We had our elections this year, and with the acquiring of Gloria Stevens, who has been such a wonderful asset to the cemetery, I urge any of you to please go on out to the cemetery and take a look. She's going to be decorating it in a very tasteful manner for the Christmas holidays with some red ribbon and bows on the fencing. She did some planting of shrubs, and it's truly, truly such a pretty serene place to be, and take a look out there if you get a chance. As you all know, or maybe not know, in the paper, there was a picture of our own June West Fall with Rod McGuire and Phyllis McGuire accepting a $900 check on behalf of the historical museum that they gave for their tours, as part of their tours proceeds to the commission, and I publicly would like to thank them for that. This year, there's just been, I can't even think of all the people I really want to thank for helping out the cemetery, but you will be acknowledged in December. Gloria and I have a surprise, and we'll be delivering those little joy things, probably the second week of December, for everybody who did help the Cemetery Commission this year. Financially, we're not in bad shape. We're not in good shape. Once again, we look good on paper, but as far as just the day-to-day operations of the commission, we get through it. Where we're at right now, we have approximately maybe $1,000 in our operating account and about $500 in our savings account. We're, right now, I'm looking at our budget for the beginning of the year in calendar year 2013, and I know that this table, in lieu of the CDs and everything, I understood why it didn't feel like we should have a budget line item included in the budget, and I understand it, but I am asking if it could be put on the agenda tonight, or maybe the next meeting, or before your budget is approved, if y'all would consider at least paying for Tom Reynolds's workers' comp and the suratee bond that comes up every January. It really doesn't amount to much. It's maybe $300, $400. If that could maybe be something that the city would help the commission with, we would surely, surely appreciate that. We can use that money for something else that needs to be done. There's numerous needs still out at the cemetery. We have some tree cuttings we really, really need to address before they do any damage to historic headstones. Thanks to Mayor Morris, over the course of last summer, he got out there with Fanning's Tree Service and got some emergency work done. I think we had a storm, wasn't that in April or May?
No, it's not.
And... Yeah. We were thankful for that because we were so worried about the tree damage to the historic headstones. We still have some additional trees. We have an estimate from Chris Fisher, who is willing to do a very detailed study on the trees out at the cemetery to be able to look at them and see which ones really, really need some care. The commission is anxious to pursue that. That would run probably about $300. So until we can get our capital built back up, we are having to delay that for now. So just to let you know, if you do go out to the cemetery and you see something that you really would like to see addressed by our commission, please feel free to pick up the phone and call me, or call any member of the commission. We'll be happy to talk to you about it. Okay, thank you.
Next would be public comments. Mr. Bob Jazinski is up first.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all again. Unfortunately, I got to reread, but I've been reading all along. The first, very first paragraph in Eureka Springs zoning ordinance states, "Whenever the requirements of this chapter are at variance with the requirements of any other ordinance, the more restrictive standard shall apply." Then you go down to 140812, "Conflicting provisions. In the event that the provisions of this zoning chapter appear inconsistent with one another or with other sections of the municipal code, the most restrictive provision shall govern." Now, the good news is that there really are no conflicts in the code. And if you read through my memo, which I believe I provided you earlier, this is just a slightly revised vision, and you go down through it, you will see here that there are references to dwelling units, and dwelling units are expressly permitted. They're expressly permitted in three districts. Those districts are District C1, Victorian Commercial, District C2, Contemporary Commercial, and District C3, Quiet Use Commercial. You won't find them in any residential areas. The only time you can do tourist lodging is when you get a CUP, except, of course, for the ones that grandfathered in years and years ago. And then we get to a little statutory construction here, and I've read this before back in 2008 when we had the CAPC issue, where I read you that phrase that you've heard before, "expressio unis exclusio alterius." And when you have a list of things in the code, and there's things not listed there, the statutory, the presumption is, and this is not me saying this, it's the Arkansas Supreme Court, that it's presumed that anything not on the list is meant to be excluded. So we have a very simple issue here, and the problem is, there is no issue. There is no ambiguity in the code. There's nothing to change. You don't have to do anything except one thing, and that's enforce the law as written. And I'll remain outside for any questions. If you'd like me to remain here, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. And if you want to see what happened with the CAPC ordinance years ago, when nobody listened to me, and went ahead and passed it even though it was in conflict with the enabling legislation, where I pointed out that it referred to hotels and motels, and nobody listened to me then, and what happened was, I had to send a proposal for an opinion for the Attorney General to Brian King. Brian King shut it off to the Attorney General, and I had, what happened, the result of that was, he agreed 100 percent. If you have a list of things, the ordinance, this enabling statute said hotels and motels, and I pointed out, it doesn't include bed and breakfast, doesn't include RV campgrounds, and what it, very diplomatically, the Attorney General said, "You better go ahead and change the enabling legislation, otherwise somebody's going to sue Eureka Springs for a big refund." Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next would be Gwen Bennett.
My name's Gwen Bennett. Nice to see you all again. And I'm speaking on the weekly rental issue, and I've sent you both hard copy and emails of what Planning Commission asked you to do back in May, and it seemed all along that I support Bob's idea that we just need to look at our law and support it. The only thing you need to do, I really think, is to change the definition of tourist lodging just to firm it up a little bit, anything less than 30 days. Bill King sent me an interesting, and I'll pass these around, each take one. That'd be an extra. And it was interesting that there's no problem with the code, and it's very simple. Someone is trying and succeeding at making it complicated. Please read this with the definitions in mind. Dwelling units are everywhere. They're what people live in or vacation if there's a kitchen involved. If there's a bedroom in a kitchen, it's an independent household. It's a dwelling unit. A single-family home is a one-dwelling unit. A duplex contains two dwelling units. Apartment houses contain multiple dwelling units. The definition has nothing to do with zoning and land use restrictions. Permitted users are listed for each zone individually. If it's not listed, as Bob said from state code, it's not as allowed or allowed by, with a CUP, it is prohibited. Tourist lodgings were specifically prohibited in R1 by ordinance 1880 and 2001. You cannot, this is Bill's opinion, you cannot remove weekly from the definition because that would outlaw all the legal tourist lodgings in C1, 2, 3, R3, and those in R2 with CUPs. And the only suggestion is as an action, other than defending the code, not passing an ordinance, not renewing the licenses, which are non-actions, and to redefine the definition of tourist lodging to read any dwelling unit renting for periods of less than 30 days. So I hope you'll consider this. Remember, the people with weeklies right now say they've invested a lot of money in their weekly business. I, as a resident, have invested a lot in my residential neighborhood, in my residential home. Bed and breakfast and other lodgings, they've invested in their CUP, in their businesses. They had to jump through a lot of hoops that these weeklies didn't have to jump through. And I just think you need to clarify it and enforce your law. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That'll do it for public comment. Next would be unfinished business. Number one is non-conforming off-premises sign. We have two ordinances. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Forward, go.
Just as the Planning Commission, I'd like to say that both of these are exactly what we asked for, and that we hope that you would support it.
Mr. Berry.
I'd like to make a motion to place the ordinance amending municipal code subsection 7.52.03, which is references to the non-conforming signs, a number, so we can read it for the first reading.
Second.
May I then second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2169. An ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 7.52.03, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current code subsection 7.52.03 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the subsection, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that subsection 7.52.03(c)(2) of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. Number two, a non-conforming sign may be maintained or repaired so as to keep the appearance and structure of the sign as it was when the prior permit was issued. A change or addition of franchise logo will be allowed as long as overall sign size is not increased. On a determination by the building official or his or her designee and notice to the permity that a non-conforming sign has been dilapidated or structurally, or has become dilapidated or structurally unsound, such sign shall be removed or repaired within 20 business days. Materials used to repair a legally non-conforming sign cannot exceed 25% of the total material content of the original sign. Section two, suborability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section three, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance 2169 on its first reading.
Your second?
Second.
May I then second it? This will call. Your voice.
Do we have a discussion first?
Yeah. Go ahead. I'm just asking, go ahead.
I think that, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not sure who wrote this ordinance, but shouldn't that be 7.52.04 instead of 03?
It's 03 because of the change that you approved a couple of months ago with the renumbering of Mr. Pownal.
All right.
Right forth.
Just wanted to clarify that.
I think your code book that you have would have the different number. It'd have the one you're citing, but that's because I think we haven't got supplements yet from the code service.
Mr. Pownal. Mr. Pownal, okay. Go ahead.
Under section one, paragraph two, and the definition, it says, "Materials used to repair legally non-conforming sign cannot exceed 25% of the total material content of the original sign." How's that going to be determined, and based on the sentence before, when does the 20 business days? I guess I have more of a problem with the last sentence, determining is it material or the cost of the sign? How are we going to, who's going to make that determination?
Mr. Webber.
Issues of that nature are often brought, if they cannot be solved otherwise, would be brought as part of an action in a criminal case to remove the sign, but the determination would be based on the building official or his designee or her designee looking at the work that is being done, and it would be 25% of the actual material.
Yeah. We're in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion, Karen.
I'd move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2169, on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, please.
Yes.
Is there some reason why we're buffaloing this through?
Mr. DeVito.
I'm just placing it on its second reading. That's, we still have a third reading and a 30-day clause before it goes into effect. So there's at least two months before it would go into effect if we approve it on its second reading tonight.
Well, the last time I tried something on the second reading, I was accused of trying to buffalo something through this table, so I was just wondering what the rush was.
Any more discussion? Mr. Pennell.
Not in defense of the second reading, but just a statement of fact, this has been on the table for over a year, I believe. And it was being held in advance until we got the signed ordinance done.
Okay, sir. Any further? No, we'll vote.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. Pennell.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
No.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
For 2.
Thank you. Mr. Will.
Ordinance 2169, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 7.52.03.
Oh, Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2169 on its second reading.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
5-1.
Okay.
Second ordinance? Mr. DeVito.
To assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
6-0. The ordinance number will be 2170. An ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title VII, Appendix VII(c), prohibited signs. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current Appendix C of Title VII of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the appendix, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, that Appendix C(a)(5) is hereby amended to read as follows. A5, a sign which contains any moving, flashing, animated lights, visible parts, or giving the appearance of animation, or otherwise qualified as a digital or electronic sign. Section 2, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section 3, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2170 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Decessive.
Okay, Mr. Fair, go ahead.
I have a, it's probably more grammatical than anything else. When you read the title, we're talking Title VII, Appendix VII(c) prohibited signs, then you go down to the first whereas, and it says, small a, Appendix C of Title VII. You go down to section 1, it's total caps, Appendix C. I think it ought to be the same way all the way through without the 7 or with the 7, one of the 2. It's, I think it's entitled, by the title of the appendix is Appendix VII(c), and that's the way it should be referred to throughout the whole change in the ordinance.
Mr. DeVito.
So you're looking at section 1, that the 7 should be added after appendix?
You write these, okay, is this?
You can add it. I don't think it makes a difference to it.
Okay.
So where, where then are the changes, please?
Some discrepancies in the Title VII, Appendix VII(c) of prohibited signs, and then Appendix C of Title VII. And then section 1 is all caps like Mr. Pennell stated, without any 7s in it at all.
And whether or not they are appropriate on an English major, Title VII, comma, Appendix VII(c) prohibited signs.
Mr. DeVito. I can ask you that question. You won't look here. I know you wrote it. Here's the code book.
7, comma, Appendix 7, comma.
They can do it either way.
I guess, so there should be a comma following the C. Close parenth.
Would Mr. Pennell please read his proposed amendment or change?
Title on ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title VII, comma, Appendix VII(c) prohibited signs. First whereas would be review the current Appendix VII(c) of Title VII. Section 1 would be, in keeping it all the same way as far as the way appendix is addressed, Appendix VII(c)(a)(5).
Any further?
Just the clarification in that first whereas, the second line, it should have Appendix VII, then parentheses, C of Title VII. Is that correct? Okay. I second that amendment.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. DeVito.
Clarification, had we...
We have another motion.
Approved it on its second, have we approved it on its first reading? Or in discussion of that? Okay.
Any further?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 2170 on its first reading as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'd move to place ordinance, I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2170 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Pennell.
We were, we were going to vote, go ahead.
When does the current moratorium expire?
There's 30. That was December the 28th. Does that sound right?
Actually, it expired on 11/22.
Any further questions, floor is open. We will come here.
Mr. Pennell.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
5-1.
That was on the suspended rules. Read by title only? No one?
To, oh yes, you're right.
Second reading by title only.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Move to...
Oh, you have to read it, but to read it.
Ordinance 2170, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title VII, comma, Appendix VII(c) prohibited signs.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to approve ordinance 2170 on its second reading.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
For 2.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, we have a decision here tonight to extend the moratorium. I don't see any other option we have. Even reading this a third time tonight, it still gives it 30 days before it goes into effect.
No, it's with the emergency clause.
I didn't have one.
And we can put one on it. But whether or not, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
Depending on whether the county would go along with it. So the choice is to either add an emergency clause or put a more, extend the moratorium. Otherwise, we're liable to run into situations like we've had on some other issues where a problem in our ordinance exists and we're trying to resolve it, and some people might take, try to take advantage of it.
Again, this is another one that was held up, that was submitted about the same time, waiting for the signed ordinance to be approved. So I'm all in favor of getting it taken care of without having to extend the moratorium if we don't have to.
Mr. DeVito.
Question for the city attorney about adding the emergency clause to it. What does that entail?
We would need to write a real short one and read it and approve it. It's not that difficult to do.
I'd move to take a five-minute break.
The second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-minute break. We'll be back in session. We were discussing ordinance 2170. I believe Mr. DeVito approved 2170 on the second read, and which seconded, the vote was 4-2. Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2170 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Second reading already?
May I second it?
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. Pennell.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
5-1. Ordinance 2170, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title VII, comma, Appendix VII(c) prohibited signs.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2170 on a third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
That should be roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Pennell.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
Yes.
5-1.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to invoke and read the emergency clause.
Second.
It's a roll call, too.
Yes, and it should say suspend the rules.
I'd move to suspend the rules and invoke and read the emergency clause.
And there was a second, Mr. Berry.
I'm still second.
Yeah.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Pennell.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
5-1. Emergency clause, section 4, that due to the need to avoid visual distraction and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is number 2, developing the weekly rental ordinance 2167 to be on the second read. Yes, sir.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
No vote. Is that all we need?
No, he changes the rules as, at will.
She's going to go ahead.
The more I look into this issue, the more I just believe maybe an error was made in the, in the original opinion. When we do have the definition about the dwelling unit, that does not go into land use. That's not saying it's okay in the land use section. So perhaps our laws are clear that there is no tourist lodging, and this is tourist lodging, in R1, and there's no, in our code, there's no 199 miscellaneous allowed in R1. So if it's not allowed, maybe we should just leave it. And then if they do take us to court, and, and for some reason our laws don't hold up, then what's going to happen? We're going to have to make an ordinance and grandfather them. If they do hold up, then we don't have... So someone who wants to come here from Little Rock and has a residence in Little Rock can also have a residence in Eureka Springs. In fact, many people have multiple residences.
So you're saying somebody can have a seven-day residence in Eureka Springs?
That's what our code lacks at this point, and that's what's being taken advantage of.
Mr. Berry, hand your hand in next.
However, that's not being rented out. They own that piece of property and come up and stay. The issue's also, we get, we can get real confusing in this, in this area. When I was first asked about this, I said basically what Tim is now saying, is that in my opinion, the dwelling units that are rented out as tourist lodging, whether it's for one day or seven days, still is tourist lodging and require conditional use permits. The problems sometimes you run into, and we probably haven't addressed this in the, in the planning, is that people have taken homes and rented out rooms, and this happens in larger cities. And so I can say this is in reference to Little Rock, where we would have slum lords taking a house and rent out twelve rooms at a hundred dollars or fifty dollars a week, and end up making basically five thousand dollars a month in rent, and they're renting out to residents. But it's basically people that end up causing a lot of trouble. And that's not happening, I don't think, here yet, but that can also happen if we're not careful. But going back and addressing the, the conditional use permits in tourist lodging, I think our, and I've always said that, I think our ordinance states is, is adequate as it is.
Mr. Pennon.
I'd just like to ask the planning chair, if she wouldn't mind, on the note that was given to us on April, or dated April 24, 2012. Basically, the recommendation to council was to want to move the word weekly from dwelling unit definition and to clarify the definition of tourist lodging. I think this ordinance has gotten far, far, far past that, and I think that's something that, I agree with Mr. Berry. I don't think there's a single thing wrong with our current zoning ordinance, other than maybe the little tweaking of the two recommendations that the planning commission had.
I do still believe that we do still need to do number two, clarify the definition of tourist lodging from transient to guest to anything less than a thirty-day rental. That would be helpful. But I understand now the word weekly cannot be removed from the dwelling unit definition because we have places like, there's a hotel across the street from me that has kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, that is considered a dwelling unit. And there's, and they do rent by the week there, but they're in a commercial zone, and that's perfectly okay. It's just our R1 that has no tourist lodging allowed in it, and these, even though they're calling themselves single-family unit, a single-family dwelling, they really are tourist lodging because it is short-term. It is transient. And so I believe that our code would hold.
Ms. Lindblad.
I'd like to hear Mr. Kristensen's opinion on this, please.
Now, the funny thing is, I researched that issue, that weekly rentals, because that was the argument I was going to make. But the problem is that most weekly rentals, even for CAPC purposes, you have to pay the CAPC tax. Anything thirty days or less. In other words, even if you have a rental for a year, if the person stays twenty-nine days, and I, and I didn't bring, of course, I didn't know there's gonna be the opinion from the Attorney General that addressed this issue here. But the question is, for weekly rentals, whether or not the intent is for the, to create a landlord-tenant relationship as opposed to a licensee. You rent a motel room for a week or two weeks or even a month or so, you're a mere licensee. But, and I brought up the point about slum laws because people couldn't pay, and that's why I researched the issue, and I'm gonna have to backtrack a little bit on that, that basically, I think what the problem here is using that word, tourist lodging. You have to use the definition of tourist lodging, and the definition is dwelling in which sleeping accommodations are provided or offered to transient guests. Get off tourist lodging. Has nothing to do, in other words, the restrictions on tourist lodging has nothing to do with tourists. It even has to do with the true person who comes into town because I'm gonna do a roof here, and I'm gonna be here for two weeks. He still comes, in other words, still comes under the definition of tourist lodging, but he's not a tourist. It has to do with transciency. And there's a whole list of things, I even did a memo, I wish I knew this was coming up, on all of the things which distinguish between a landlord-tenant relationship, week-to-week rentals, and, and as you pointed out, in the state code, the numerous references to week-to-week tendency, how to be victim, when does it end? But, and some people live in week-to-week for their entire lives in some of these slum lodgings. But still, for the purposes, I think, of transient lodging, unfortunately, with this definition, they come under it. If, for tax purposes, I know for sure, and that was the biggest surprise, but I, I think there's a distinction without a difference here. If they're transient here, any kind of transient, whether we don't use the word tourist, the proper word to use is transient guests. I hope it satisfies somebody there.
Transient guests.
Ms. Lindblad.
So are you saying that that should be changed to transient guests? Is that what you're saying?
No, I say leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is.
Don't change anything because this covers any, whether they're a tourist, whether they're a roofer, whether there's somebody who's coming into town, like the perfect example I had where some woman came to interview as a housekeeper, and she said, I just came here from Harrison, I rented a room in a house here, and I'm renting week-to-week. You see what I'm saying? And now that would, she's not a tourist, she's here looking for work, that's the most beautiful example of it. But unfortunately, under the code, under our code here, she's still considered a transient guest, I believe, because, and until she makes an arrangement to, you know, exceed, you know, under our code, the thirty-day thing, I think is the breakaway here.